I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, standing for all this silence, the village the last couple days lost two people. My senior rescue, the former pastor St. Helmut's church and Mary Conley, longtime resident. I was the former president of the Luiz Club and the Rosary Office Society amongst many others. So, good evening. Welcome to the council. Welcome to Zoom. Tonight, we're going to go through our agenda, then we'll board reports. Follow my board report, we need some updates that I'm looking through, going forward. And then after that, we'll open up to general questions and comments. So, Ms. Walsh, if you could stop me in a minute.
Thank you, Mayor Fitzgerald. I would ask the board to approve the minutes of the regular board trustees meeting held on December 21st, 2021.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The motions carried.
I would ask the board to approve the scheduled accounts table as follows. General funds: $747,853.45. Pool funds: $0.00. Capital funds: $0.00.总额: $747,853.45.
All of them registered. I'll say again. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, from board?
Trustee Pambaya, trustee Chang, trustee Chiara, trustee Stewart, and Mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye.
I would ask the board to adopt a resolution that the where the general religious election will be held on Tuesday, March 15th, 2022. And then the toll fair shall be opened at 12:00 noon and closed at 9:00 p.m. in the evening. And then the basis of polling elections shall be as follows. Election District Number One, Duane's Firehouse. Election Districts Two and Three at the Recreation Pool Building. Election District Number Four at the Atlantic Avenue Firehouse.
I love her resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Pambaya, trustee Chang, trustee Chiara, trustee Stewart, and Mayor Fitzgerald. I would ask the board to determine that the special use permit application made by Merrill Joseph to convert all this bank to use as a key to recall on the first floor of 166-178 Jericho Turnpike is a direct-to-action as that term is defined in CBR and will not have significant effect on the environment.
All of the resolutions.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Pambaya, trustee Chang, trustee Chiara, trustee Stewart, and Mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye.
I would ask the board to permit Russell Cowan to recycle work for the DPW carry over four 2021 vacation days to be used in the first quarter of 2022 due to unforeseen circumstances.
All of the resolutions.
I'll say. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Pambaya, trustee Chang, trustee Chiara, trustee Stewart, and Mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye.
And I would finally ask the board to ratify the approval for Fort Park that our school district to use the parking lot at Tribeca Recreation Center today, January 4th, 2022, between 11:00 a.m. and 1:30 p.m. for the purpose of a drive-by distribution and pickup of COVID-19 testing kits subject to CDC and Nassau County Department of Health guidelines. The village has to be given insurance on file and in acknowledged indemnification.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, from board. All in favor? Aye. Against? The motions carried.
That would be all.
carried. Now for the board reports, and we'll start with the chairman of the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening and good night. And happy new year to all. First, here are chambers of Congress and our businesses. We are happy to announce the 2022 Cobra Avenue Chamber of Congress officers. They are President Ernie Jorgulich of Bodywork Spa and Yoga, Vice President Kathy Grassman of John Mark Women and Boarding, Secretary Nancy Miller, a volunteer in several of our local nonprofits, Treasurer Anne Yuso of Solana Travel, and Resource and Social Media Coordinator Maggie Chen of Cordell. This awesome group of business owners brings impressive experience in the Cobra Avenue Chamber leadership. With Anne Yuso being one of the founders, with Anne Jorgulich and Kathy Grassman, both past presidents of the chamber, and Nancy Miller bringing her media and advertising experience from our gateway newspaper. We look forward to the tremendous energy and plenty of excitement they will bring to the businesses of the Village of Flow Park and Stewart Manor. Stay tuned. For the Department of Public Works, if you've seen our snowplows out and about, but there's no snow yet, know it's coming. It's snowplow driver training for our newer DPW staff members, so all will be ready for that first storm, maybe this Friday. In the meantime, hot overpair and times of winter weather is also underway. For the Conservation Society, missing centennial gardens in your trips there to take the beauty of nature, you can experience it vicariously through the winter months with a 2022 Centennial Gardens calendar. It features spectacular photos of nature at the gardens throughout each month of the year. Only a few copies are left. You can get yours online at Christine Cozak Photography. Click on the Centennial Gardens 2022 calendar link on the menu. Check out the sample and enjoy your very own throughout the year. And for our Recreation Department, with the holidays behind us, it's time for some winter then spring recreation. Check out the Flow Park Recreation Session 2, winter-spring programs, and their enticing descriptions. Put on your sneakers where necessary and get ready for fitness and fun. The recreation schedule is on the Village Recreation website and was mailed to residents, emailed to residents with the village items. And keep those recreation suggestions coming throughout the winter months. We all wish everyone a happy, healthy, and peaceful year. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant David Michael. Trustee Chang.
As the third track project, as you have all probably heard, after the threat of contempt citation, the Village of Garden City has finally issued the requisite permits to the work of that Manhattan Bridge to begin. This probably was delayed approximately five months to get those permits, and hopefully this project will still be completed on time. As to the fire department, last month I reported, please watch your Christmas decorations, on December 26th, the fire department did an outstanding job in stopping a fire in the West End. Thankfully, there were no injuries and no structural damage to the premises. And due to the holidays, I reported a false December on next board meeting.
Thank you, trustee Chang. Trustee Chiara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ending the year on a positive note for our police department. On Thursday, December 30th, our police department responded to a life-saving call of an unresponsive male on board a approaching Long Island Railroad train. Officers Loria, Murphy, Tandredy immediately boarded the train and started a life-saving measure of CPR. They were quickly joined by our Fort Park Fire Department chiefs Dodson, Ben, and Luga, and ex-chief on the body, along with rescue members Mary Lou King and Daniel Brooks, who took over CPR with the assistance of Nassau County Medical Personnel, Gresham, Kasich, and Cornfield. The aid individual was transported by our Fort Park Rescue, and by the tiny ambulance arrived at the hospital, the aid individual had regained the pulse, saving his life. Our newly demoted Sergeant Matt Vexcoosi, on his first serious call as a supervisor, commented on how well all the departments worked together to save this individual's life. Sergeant Vexcoosi stated that this was incredible to witness and very satisfying to be part of. All should be commended for their actions. It was a great way to end 2021 by saving this individual's life. Thank you to all who followed this life-saving event. Great job. Once again, thank you to our Fort Park Police Department and our volunteer fire department for all that you do for our community. We all appreciate your service to our community. For the Building Department, with the start of the new year, the Building Department would like to recommend to everybody before starting any projects on your homes or businesses, please check the Building Department to determine if any requirements will permit some needed disboarded and potential delays with your projects. The department can and will provide information on village codes that may also have an impact on your project. As a reminder, the installation of ductless air conditioning units and heating units, which have become very popular, do require a permit. When obtaining the permit of these units, the Building Department will describe where these units can be installed and investment to do so. Thank you and have a happy new year.
Thank you, trustee Chiara. Trustee Stewart.
Good evening. Happy New Year to all of our residents. I'd like to thank the residents that reached out to my family and myself with their warm holiday wishes. I would like everyone to be assured that myself and the board will continue to work hard to preserve the quality of life we enjoy here in the village. For the library, December was a very fine-filled month with the Flow Park Library. We're so grateful to childrens our age, I think I doubt, for our countdown to Christmas read alouds on the new Flow Park Children's Library YouTube channel. They were a lot of fun to follow along with. The library's Urban Explorers program had a wonderful time in New York City, visiting the Met and Central Park. A good time was had by all, as evidenced by the pictures of this fun day that are available for viewing on the Flow Park Library website at flowparklibrary.org. A big shout out and thank you to Solana High School teacher and Fort Park resident Diane Ventura. Her students participated in our teen holiday car drive, where they made cards to cheer up kids in local hospitals during this holiday season. Their beautiful cards and warm sentiments were so prescient. You can visit the library's website for registration information about registering for January events such as chair yoga, the Monday movie matinee on Monday, the 10th, the movie is Evan Hansen, winter press for grades three to five on Tuesday, the 11th. The 11th also features a superhero training academy for pre-K through second graders. After the superheroes complete their classes, they will receive an official superhero certificate, dressing up as your favorite superhero as encouraged. I wish you all a very best in 2022.
Thank you, trustee Stewart. Before I get to that, I'll just comment on one thing that trustee Chang mentioned about the fire department. They do a phenomenal job. One thing I would ask residents, if there is a fire scene and you do have some sort of issue, if you could kindly not disturb the scene and bring the issue to the village hall, the police department, or the fire department on the subsequent day, that would be really appreciated. Fire scenes are, believe it or not, it looks like chaos, but they're very controlled and it has to remain that manner. And disruptions by residents to the chief while the scene's going on can cause a lot of significant damage, and it's not advised. Certain things that come out will have to be addressed immediately. So, appreciate the residents' cooperation with that. With regards to Belmont, I think most of you have seen news stories lately that Elmont has had a lot of issues with people walking on their streets and using their streets as the parking lot. The Assembly and the New York State Senate have proposed bills to allow Elmont and portions of Elmont and portions of Belrose Terrace to have resident parking permits. Recently, Assemblywoman Solage and Senator Kaplan's office reached out to us to see if we wanted to partake in those bills and to give them a street name. So, a couple things. Currently, as Mayfair Plainfield gates are closed, we have not seen parking problems like they have been witnessed in Elmont. However, once the full-time train station at Belmont, which is on Belrose Terrace, is open, it's conceivable that arena patrons can park in Fort Park, take the train through stops, and go there at the event. They could avoid parking fees at the arena, which I think on the low end are $20 to $25, and for more premier events, it goes up to $45. And then also, to avoid the fees, they will also potentially save time by hopping on the train, getting off in Belrose, Fort Park, and getting in their car and being on the road, and avoid with my IC by 45 minutes to an hour delay to get out of the parking lot. So, I've been speaking with Senator Kaplan's office and Assemblywoman Solage's office. Before I move on, I would like to thank both the Assemblywomen and Senator Kaplan and Rebecca Sheehan in Senator Kaplan's office, and Josh Joseph in Assemblywoman Solage's office for their assistance and guiding us through this to this point. They have requested for us to provide them with the streets that we may want. This bill is actually out there to want to read it. It's the Assembly Bill 7554B, the Assembly Bill 35A, 3594. They list the streets in Elmont and Belrose Terrace. So, we need to come up with the streets that we would want to see, allow parking permits for residents. And in order for the Assembly and the Senate to take it up, we have to actually pass a home rule with those streets. We can't just give them the streets without having to ask something. So, we'll be done and come up with some sort of rationale as to what blocks to include. For those of you familiar with the space, if you're going to the Emerald Lot, which is the North Lot, you have to walk probably 15, 20 minutes to get to the top of the lot, which is where the station is. So, we measured the station to the furthest part of the lot, which is about 1,800 feet. Instead, if someone wanted to avoid the parking, how far would they potentially walk in Fort Park? And we decided around 1,800 feet from both the Belrose Station and the Fort Park Station. So, we took a radius, Doline, can you pull up the maps? And I don't think there's any maps here in the village hall, is there?
I have a map.
You do?
I have a map.
So, Doline's got all the maps of the streets. It does include a very large part of the village. It encompasses the entire West End. And it pretty much goes from the school all the way to Plainfield Avenue, east-west. There's small section around the Business District all the way down to Ward. And on the north, it goes all the way up to Jericho Turnpike, between Rensselaer Lane and Plainfield Avenue. And then on the south, it covers the entire border west of Plainfield Avenue. And we also are going to include, it's not on the map that we included, is several streets west of West Poplar, to Plainfield Avenue by the high school. Some people have noticed that people have been walking from around the high school area to the event. Haven't seen much, but we only have one shot right now of naming the streets, and we are going to include those. So, all we're looking to do is name the streets. We have not, at any point right now, had the permit program in place and what the parking changes would be. We'll see how that goes, when and if the time is necessary. Maybe we have to change it to one-hour parking, but the good news is, if we do have this program in place, then it would be not an issue for residents that live in that area. So, if we were happy to change the parking around the Belrose Train Station to one-hour on event nights, the people that live there would have a permit and it would not contain them. The only way you can get the streets and permits is via enactment of a state law. We looked into this in the past on a number of occasions, and it absolutely is state law. I think it started in 1982. So, the Senator's office and the Assemblywoman's office has asked us to get them the streets as soon as possible. That's why I'm bringing it up tonight. And at some point in time in the next three to five business days, we will probably have to have another board meeting in order to pass a home rule with the exact street name today. But we want to bring it to the residents first to see if they had any questions, comments, additions, subtractions. But the main thing is to get the streets named at this point so that we have the ability to issue permits when and if necessary. And maybe at some further time, potentially have to change the parking instructions in a large portion of the village. They're on the board up there for the comment. So, with that, for this portion, I'd like to open it up to anyone in the village hall first that has any questions or comments on it. I do see there's a good number of people here. There's also a good number of people on Zoom. So, in village hall?
In village hall.
Yeah, sure. If you could just take the names of them.
Jessica Consey.
Good evening.
Hi, Jessica Consey. I think definitely you want to extend this border near Memorial because I know I've heard of people parking down there and walking across of the state of the arena.
So, we were going to start it exactly on the map we just made addition. It's going to be, you drew a line down West Poplar?
Right.
Down to Vanuatu and all the way west. So, it would include West Poplar Beach, Locust, Belmont, Cherry Mill, and Vanuatu.
Yeah, I think that would be definitely necessary. And then with this feeling on Belmont State, I live on Mayfair by the gate. So, would we get parking passes, say we have people coming and we need to park on the street for four hours at night? Could we get parking passes?
So, we haven't discussed or come up with, you know, what we're going to do. How many of each residence, you know, are we going to issue business passes? When we would issue business passes? How to implement that whole program? That would be something I'd have to look.
Because people could actually say, I have guests coming and, yeah.
And also, certainly we could do something else with those passes too, so we got to.
True, yeah. And what about, is it going to be tickets? Is it going to be like a little booth thing, like Barstool's Gardens? What do you think?
We haven't gone back. I had a couple of quick discussions with the police commissioner about the best way of implementing this, but we got a lot of research to do about something like this to make it as efficient and as easy as possible so that, you know, the police or the neighborhood aides can go around and ticket the people who need to be ticketed while not ticketing the people who have the permits.
Right.
So, would you?
And door towel or booth?
Right.
We have a garden.
Right, maybe it's worth investing in a couple of tow trucks.
If you're not concerned, then more than happy to talk.
What if that was Belrose Village involved with that Adrian Mifflin?
So, I had a conversation with Assemblywoman Solage late last week about Belrose. And Belrose has a law, we can't park on the street. Before I learned, they enacted that somewhere before 1982, when there was, it was very far, and Rose is shaking her head. That's why I was there the other morning.
I could just say, Belrose Village, it's daytime, no parking. 10 to 12, 2 to 4. You can park right now in Belrose Village from 4 to 10:00 in the morning.
I do know that the Assemblywoman was only made aware about this.
I don't know what the status is.
Yeah, I can't remember.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thomas Gallagher, I don't want to butcher it. I have two-part question. I'm curious to know what the status is of the high school with them installing gates on the parking lot. Are they going to now no longer allow overnight parking at the high school?
Yeah, I don't know the answer, but I do know that recently for the metal roll up, right?
Yes.
I informed Mr. Gallagher that you really should direct that question to the school district because we don't have control of it properly.
Understandable, but then I was going to follow up with, if they do decide to make that gate closed, is there any opportunity to get any kind of permits to park in front of my house? I have multiple children in that room to put the cars. I park at the high school from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m.
That's a separate issue that kind of has to do with Belmont?
No, I understand.
Then you can't ask for a variance in that, is that wrong?
A one-time variance? Or I have a year?
No, I mean, what they want, two years.
You can do a special exception variance that is good for two years.
And is that the each department or is that?
The other building department.
The building department. We filed with the building management.
You're talking about parking on the street.
I park on the street.
Oh, sorry.
There's nobody in my driveway. I turn the lights on.
Well, this is, what you're talking about is not me.
So, you need a larger driveway.
I'm sorry?
You need a larger driveway to do a special exception permit.
Well, again, they've always had a problem making the driveways larger anyway with the building department, but at this point, I can't do that.
So, these permits would only be good regarding Belmont? That's a totally separate issue.
Okay, so, fairly enough to the high school's.
Yeah, that's what they do.
Does the police commissioner know if they're going to attempt to close the gates?
They haven't spoken to me, Tom, at all, so.
Will they put up two big gates?
No, I saw that. They haven't told us what their plans are. They haven't discussed with us anything about parking issues. I can find out tomorrow. I can call.
I'd appreciate it because I only park again from 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., so I'm not interfering at high school and as a 30-year resident in Fort Park.
Have you spoken to anybody at school?
I don't really know who directed to. Actually, I have given me one of the school board members. I just don't really know how to contact that guy.
Right. I'll speak to the principal tomorrow and maybe she'll ask for information.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Just a moment. Don't worry, you can have this.
Okay, thanks.
To remind you that this law, that is the two bills, the Assembly and the Senate, the purpose is solely described as having a direct access to Belmont all the way here. So, I felt that's why I apologize. Anyone else here in the village hall with a question and comment? Doline, you want to ask on Zoom and I guess?
If they can raise their hand, we'll put a chat in comment.
If anybody on Zoom has a question, if you can raise your hand, Doline will unmute you.
There are a lot of people, so.
There are. Any comments?
Captain.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, wait. Thank you very much. I'm sorry. You can see it down there on the floor. I apologize for not being able to turn unfortunately down here, parking over here at the house. So, this is the best I can do. I just want to start off by taking the word of the mayor for all their hard work to be down protecting our village from, you know, potentially negative impacts that develop at the Fort Park. I know you guys have spent many blue nights, especially in West End, seeing the impacts that we're dealing with. Especially the, what we call the North Hall or, is that what we have a lot? So, thank you all very much. I know this is not your burden to bear. You asked me to ask this, but unfortunately we haven't. And you guys know a phenomenal job. I thank you on the end of West End and my family and friends and neighbors and all the like. I just want to recognize that we fully support this, this idea in the village with the current parking being established for Belmont and Belrose Terrace. You know, these patrons are smart people. They can figure out, they can figure out what, if they're out, where the next place to park is will work for them on park. And it's only about time that they could figure out Fort Park, whether it be, as you mentioned, the train route or just parking deep in the West End, walking from the top, walking down Superior Road and just walking right on the old path of the Belmont Transit. If people are willing to walk miles from the station to the arena, I can guarantee they're willing to walk a mile or two safely by us. So, I fully support this. I did want to just bring up one other idea. I understand the concept of the train stations, but those of you who are the consumer, who are, as we talked, in fact, late to, you know, to transport yourself, these people, the patrons could potentially park in the non- permit area, they'll Fort Park, let's say, east of or west of, and we're all going to the arena for West End playoffs. That would be the next idea. These people have, I just want to bring it up. I don't know how we can enforce that based on 1,800 feet, but do something. And I just want to also thank the rest of the community for their contribution.
Thanks, Karen. Anyone else on Zoom?
There's a message. Can you see it? Do you want to read it?
It doesn't look like it's the whole message.
You can't see it?
Does he down any worse or? Can you read it all, wait a minute?
It's Deirdre Whitburn. First, I'd like to thank all of you for your hard work with Belmont Construction. I'd like to know when the fence along Belmont will be replaced. And hold on, it's fine. On the dead ends, the fence on the dead end, Crocus has literally fallen down May Fourth story, the first few islands game, when people were climbing over there to get back to Fort Park. So, she's also seen one of them.
So, the Deirdre Whitburn's question is, when is the fence along Belmont property going to be replaced? Niagara has reached out to us on a number of occasions over the last two, three months. And in springtime, they are replacing the fence the entire way from the school all the way to Plainfield Avenue, along the fire shopping mall. Uh, looks like Dennis is forgetting who's this.
How high, she speaks about how high the fence getting?
I believe it is eight feet. It's a tight net, eight-foot fence. When we get further along with that, I'll ask them to give us some sample, more samples, and potentially, uh, we'll put out a joint announcement with Nyra.
Okay, without Michael Colada?
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Michael Colada.
Hey, um, everybody, Michael Colada, I would not complain, feel that, right aside that red line there, and I just wanted to say that I think this proposal is a great idea, uh, we, we support it, and, uh, I just wanted to thank the mayor and all the trustees for all the work that you guys do, to protect the quality of life in our village.
My pleasure. I explain. Well, I think Dennis is forgetting who's this.
I don't see the sign, do you see?
Yes, I'm hearing, do we get any?
Yes, we can, that's how you.
Very, very, and, uh, like, uh, we had a flood because of the COVID restrictions, uh, which are really safe, uh, so, thank you for getting, well, very, 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 to participate, listen to the discussions tonight. Uh, the first thing, Mr. Mayor is, uh, is this going to be designated parking district?
Um. Yes, yes. Yes. Very safe.
I know that the Belmont Parking District already has, uh, been designated and has implemented some stringent, uh, regulations, uh, for residents. Now, uh, I would suggest that, uh, because of the plenary nature of this, that the entire, uh, area in Viltor Flo Park, which is in the town of Hempstead, be designated as a parking district, in order to give the board and residents a chance to, uh, uh, at least have within the district, I believe you could have some different regulations. Uh, I am concerned about, uh, this being my age, uh, two, two days with, with problems, one, one part of the village torn up, and I think you do only have one, one shot, uh, at this, that, that designated the entire, uh, area for a park, if within the town of Hempstead would solve that problem, I think going maybe to that, so you don't have to, uh, obviously have to visit all the, all streets that are basically solid, jerky turn way, but we wouldn't have to, at this point, uh, you know, leave some streets, streets behind, which in the future might become problematic.
The thought, again, the thought process was the eighteen hundred feet, you know, when someone walked further than eighteen hundred feet, to get to the car, that was the rationale that we were, Richard told me.
Yeah, and, and obviously, what I would suggest is that, that, that the, if it is in fact designated parking district within the state of New York, that we would only want to work the state of New York once, uh, we could take, for example, uh, the, the Hillcrest neighborhood, obviously, where, uh, trust B W N A or, uh, Cebon you live, uh, right now is outside the district, and, uh, being that I'm also president of the Conservation Society, I, I would hate to see that, uh, the Centennial Gardens and, uh, and the streets around Centennial Gardens becoming an impromptu Uber taxi hub, in order to get over to the U S B Arena. So, uh, if, if, if we only have one chance in this, is to make this, uh, as wide and as large of an area, uh, and within, uh, an area, we could then designate more, more precisely as needed. I would also suggest, uh, in the original, uh, E S D submissions, uh, I had, and other members of the Belmont Task Force had suggested that the North Lot be designated as municipal parking lot. Now, in fact, the L I R R train station, there is going to be commuter parking, and what I would like to be able to see is that members or residents within the parking district of the floor park also have access to the commuter parking in that Belmont, so, uh, this might accomplish that as well.
Okay, okay, I'll, uh, we'll give the additional space and photos.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else?
All of them, but Tweedy.
All of them, Tweedy.
I hope it sounds good.
I'll be there.
I just, it'd be, it'd be fun, yeah, you, but, I haven't.
Didn't have seen that in the past.
Yes, I also think of everyone else today, uh, you know, the efforts that, that, that being put in by you, and by the members of the board, yeah, projecting again, as, as Michael, a lot of saying, you know, the quality of life for, you know, in between the efforts of the old report and, and the first city association of these parks, I think we're doing a pretty, you know, pretty open job at this point, uh, but I would also like to echo the events and look at the, at the sign, you know, not that many, that many streets that are outlined that district, and we have already seen some people, you know, look, you know, talking, uh, people who are taking homes, see, you take home, say, the park princess, walk, you know, floor park, Belrose, Belrose terrace, and they get over there to the old station, and over to that area, and go that way, and then jump on the bus on the other side of the street, uh, the other side of the station. So I, I think it's, I think, I think, I think, to extend this, to include the entire, the entire, basically, all this floor park, uh, that they, that, that makes it pretty consistent with Belrose, Belrose terrace and floor park, all being beside each other, that makes it something to consider. The other thing on this, uh, clarification, with that, jurors, those laws and those, uh, interpretation, whatever, uh, whatever you decide, down that the other, this, this floor park, go down the other, on the other first station.
So, John, Jerry, Kevin, from the home rule, we have to pass a resolution asking the state to enact these streets as part of a law. They won't do it without us asking for a resolution.
Right, with the coot us and legislation that create, allow us to have a special parking district within the village, and then we adopt the regulation rules governing how that parking district will operate.
Could you hear?
I could hear you, yes, sir. And you, you would have, be the building manager, be disseminating these permits?
Yes. I mean, a lot, a lot, we have to, I gave it a lot of thoughts, a lot of thought that we're gonna have to go into, how to administrate the program, institute the program, and, uh, you know, how the police are going to enforce the program, that's for another time.
Right, well, I mean, the benefits, registration costs, and, and the, you know, the other benefits that we might have as well. Well, yeah, thank you very much for thinking of us, and, uh, really serving people in order, and, what's the time of this, Kevin? Yeah.
So the, good question, the, uh, according to the Assemblywoman's office, the Senator's office, it's going into committees in mid-January, so we gotta get this to them, uh, real fast. Yeah, then, then that has to go to, that has to go to the Assembly, the Senate, then ultimately, they don't know that's a sign, so there is time, but I know, obviously, it's a, uh, extreme essence to the people in Belmont.
This is a final point, an observation, when we first, when we meet with the, actually, by state development, Belmont, and, and, we were no different from ours, it was known by Belmont at the time, by, you know, race department, was, we were, and we were, and that was the north lot, now they've got two billion dollars, it's now capital.
Yeah, say, nice way to say it.
Well, thanks again, Kevin, for, 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 thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else on Zoom?
I want to say more hands, please.
Okay, um, yeah, sure.
The turnaround time on this has been very, very fast, um, it started in reaction to the problems that were very well publicized in Belmont, the tremendous amount of cars and the issues with, um, fans who own those cars and their lack of respect for private property. Um, but Hempstead, where Belmont is obviously located, not their own municipality, but part of the town Hempstead, Hempstead didn't act on this until December twenty-first, so when you look at them starting this legislation and going for us, just don't make in on that, but considering the holidays, that's a very small amount of time we've had to turn this around and, um, give it the detailed work we would like to do now, but we'll have to do in the future.
Thank you. Kevin, yeah?
Kevin, if I have another question?
Sure.
Now, hi, guys, how are you? Um, one last, uh, just, you know, question, this was brought up by, uh, Mr. Governor, um, you know, there hasn't talked about, uh, placing the fence, uh, on Belmont Park, um, uh, I, I, I believe it's the time, I was starting doing more, um, they put a very nice, uh, wall on the fence, uh, on the fence, uh, like, growing, you know, on the area. Um, the, uh, the fence that, uh, is being used for, for Park, West End, um, they don't, that's been designed yet, I'm sure that, uh, our telegraph board is to make sure that it is appropriate fence, um, I just, so I, however, the mayor mentioned that it's an eight-foot fence, um, an eight-foot fence is pretty, pretty tall, I would say, uh, I, I think that's not a large, only, um, and I think ours only is a max of maybe five, possibly six, um, is that fence going to the, uh, just going like the dead ends, as, uh, Mr. Governor pointed out, or is that fence going to the, uh, next to residential houses, door, or, you know, back doors and such? And is, uh, do you think that that's appropriate to, uh, to have, uh, next to our, our homes? I mean, I understand the concept of, you know, fence, right, if you move, you can all ground out at home, it's, it's a lot of data, and, and parts, but, and obviously, we want, uh, like, patrons coming from the local to our, uh, housing, if that's a part. And we think that it's appropriate, that we consider residents that live in private property and other, uh, needs, that that's appropriate, and hopefully, that will work with us, that's how we get that on, right?
Okay, I, like I mentioned, I will speak to Nyra about the, uh, the, uh. And determine, you know, what the appropriate is under whatever jurisdiction they are, or they must have given.
Another question?
Yeah. Who?
Ms. Penn?
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure.
Hi, welcome to the West End, I'm on March Avenue, West End, I might take a minute to say, first off, thank you for the time and effort, that's greatly appreciated for us in West End. I did want to add, I was the, uh, last person earlier, I have, and, uh, we'll probably stay one step ahead, less, uh, so we do need to take ahead and be ready for that, uh, and also, that in order to save twenty-five or thirty yards, people will be walking the block, right, a longer distance, uh, so we do need to keep that in mind as well, and I'm happy to bring this up at another time, but it's more appropriate, since someone mentioned the fences, and did want to get out of, uh, the void, the parking, and find out if that is being, so currently being addressed, um, the, uh, the arena folks.
Yeah, so absolutely, um, I was gonna search my comments that, I know a number of my friends on, uh, that are in Crocus are in attendance here this evening, which is, uh, they're living there every night, there's an event, um, Jerry, village administrator Ben, Rick and I have had a number of conversations with Senator Solan, Senator Caplan's office, along with the E S D, about a number of issues, including the parking, we have documented it on video, um, and, uh, my personal opinion is, I think it's only gonna get worse if nothing's done soon, because, um, the one Yawas are winning, and we've seen when they've won, it gets louder, and, uh, in the springtime, it's gonna be a different story over the summer time, so, um, thanks for your question, though, we have a direct correspondence, including something yesterday, I think, going back out to the Senator's office, as follows, um, about the noise and, uh, the placement of the existing fence that runs along from a school all the way down to Mayfair, and we believe it's in the wrong spot. So a lot of work to be done on that, and, uh, absolutely want to follow.
I appreciate that, and I did see that the gate by the A R entrance, the gate was completed, closed that gap, and some initial bar, perhaps, for some, uh, that's what's gonna see that.
Yeah, that seems to have stopped the people from, uh, trying to traverse it out of the, uh, Poplar via that area.
It should be a longer flight as well.
And the police, the police have done an excellent job to the, to that, you know, where possible, it's pretty much every night, they're down there, there's an event, so it's definitely.
Uh, my, I just wanna say that they are, they must be closed.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other questions? Okay, with that, I'd like to close this portion of the board meeting. And a little bit about comments, I'll stop. Second, full favor?
I am.
So as we normally do now, we will, if any, all questions or comments that people may have on, anything, that we could address here, if it's a bill, I think, I think. Can't solve all those problems. Tell you, anybody on Zoom? I think there's someone. No. Sure.
Hello?
Okay.
Thanks, Manfred, and just, uh, the status update with the garage, I heard that there was a permit, I mean, uh, something hung up as far as sprinkler systems, and, uh, when the garage does become, you know, active, would that, you know, hopefully mitigate some of that federal parking at all?
I don't know the status of the garage, but it should help, but I think that might only reach us, because once they go forward with the mall.
Yeah.
The parking is, is not, but, which will, we become the malls, we have to go somewhere too, so.
Right.
I, if it is, it'll be temporary.
Yeah, and, uh, with the, how about the noise, that was just a reader, if there's any teeth to try to mitigate that, it's kind of hard to, I actually have seen it myself, looking out my window, uh, on wind, like you said, it is kind of oppressive, so, just second that last comment.
What, what I, what I can say is, your block's emails to the Senator, and the Senator would absolutely get attention there, and it's good to get those emails to them, so they don't think it's just, you know.
Yeah.
The mayor being obstinate about something, but it comes, I think the residents say something that means a lot, so, keep those, I know you guys have been very diligent with it, just keep in mind, they'll be showing you. And, uh, as you, as you guys know, keep us in the loop, Austin. Kevin?
This is real quick, have you, uh, heard anything further about the arboriding along the inside of the fence that they put up? The, the arboriding?
Yeah, the, 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 the motions, right?
You know, go a long way towards mitigating some of the, uh, the lights and the noise coming out, it's not gonna block everything, but, you know, the, the lights and some noise coming out of the lock, and the lock.
If I remember correctly, the last correspondence we sent to Senator Caplan's office included, put the arboriding in the right spot, in the inside of the fence, not on the outside.
In the inside, the, the, now, the street fences, the Crocus? Um, the inside of the park fence, right, the one that brings the lock?
What, what, they represented to us on the thirtieth, November thirtieth, was, there would be arboriding planted along the fence next to your house, you took your idea as well, and said you wanted arboriding planted along that triangle fence on the other side as well, have a double barrier. The first one, they said it's definitely happening, the second, this had happened yet, I know, but they said that's happening, and the second one, they said it could be considered.
Yeah, the double, double would be great, but I think, you know, having, uh, a lot of fences further out, closer to the lock, would block the light and the noise more effectively.
So they told us in doing it by your house, you also ask for it against the arbor fence, as we.
But inside the arbor fence, because we know, where they put it in the schools, not in the spot.
Inside the arbor fence, okay.
Because if they put it, uh, on the outs, on the Poplar side.
Right.
It's becoming your, uh, by the schools.
Oh, right, right, yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah. Okay, um, any other plans for that space in there? Because that was a part of, that was a part of like the whole contention.
So the, the, the school board put a letter into franchise oversight board, asking for that to be, uh, a needsment, so they could use that as an actual threshold, so they would have to determine the needsment on the space.
Okay, and that would prevent, I know, um, your, your, why this is not supposed to be building, and that would prevent, pretty much permanently prevent it from. Okay, and then prevent, I know, um, your requirements is not supposed to be building, and that would prevent, pretty much permanently prevent them from continuing. Okay.
I think they put that letter in two weeks.
The fifteenth, and we submit something in support.
So that's a proposal as opposed to a done deal, a request?
It's a request, so they, they made an official request, as Jerry just mentioned, we sent a letter in support of that.
And will be notified of any progress?
Sure, I'll keep you on.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks for all your help, once we can get this out there.
Is another question on Zoom?
Sure.
Smith? Put it in the chat as well. Uh, will this number be done to the side of focus identification?
So there's a question?
Fifteen person.
Go ahead, Mrs. Smith, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready, my, uh, uh, saving you, and I have two issues, uh, kind of primarily related to, uh, the main objective of this evening. Just wanna find out, I'm, this member will be done on focus saving, and in addition to that, the second thing, the street seems to be sinking on focus saving, and when it rains, I get a sheet of solid ice in front of my house.
Cro. What's your address, what's the prosecutor's?
Two thirty-six Focus Avenue. Between test, not the screws.
Okay, all of you will have, uh, I will speak to superintendent Kennedy tomorrow and have him take a look at it, okay?
Thank you very much.
Sure.
And that means your attention to, uh, to, and asking how familiar with your candidate.
My pleasure. I'll leave it on Zoom.
Was that two thirty-six or two eighty-six?
Two thirty-six.
Two thirty-six.
Okay, thank you, everyone, uh, for tuning in. Thank you, Phil, Zululul, for coming out. Uh, have a happy and a special and healthy weekend.